I would like to call this November 20th, 2018 business meeting to order at exactly 7:30. Roll call, Ruth Ann.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Hall.
Here.
Member Pulaski.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Fisher is here. Member Vice President, Rollins Gay.
Here.
And also President Demmett via phone line.
electronically.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications?
No, they're not.
To the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Do we have any citizen's statements tonight? If you're interested in making a statement, Lori's in the back. Please, there are golden rod sheets out there. Fill them out, get them to Lori, and she will come up here. Thank you. And that's the name on here, M.C.? M.C. Neal. And if there's any more, please have them up here, please. Any more, please have them.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am M.C. Neal, Director of Information Technology and Data Analytics. To cut straight to the chase, it has not been confirmed, but I have reason to believe I am one of the USD 116 staff members included on the quote-unquote blacklist, and would like to speak on that. Articles have surfaced over the past week publicly unveiling this investigation, but conversations were occurring throughout the district long before this hit the press. I actually had a three-page speech that I was going to run through this evening outlining everything I had been through since I got hired on in May, and how now, looking back at these events, I can only deduce it was due to me being a name on the blacklist, or in the very least, there being rumors of me being one of the people on the blacklist. I'm not a political person by any means. I just want to come to work, keep my head down, do my job, and honestly went back and forth about coming up saying anything at all, but for this, I felt that something had to be said. I felt the board needed to know how hurtful, insulting, degrading, and debilitating of a work environment the district has become for someone on the blacklist, or again, at least rumored to be on the blacklist. To hear whispers in the school hallways about how all the recent black hires are not qualified for their jobs, about how they are all under investigation and won't be long for the district, and about how the board has hired a law firm to make sure that this is saying through. Just imagine the undermining that could mean for someone such as a director trying to run a department. Imagine people within that department second-guessing the direction the director is steering the department in because of these whispers about a blacklist. Imagine colleagues not taking input with any sort of seriousness because of the list, or again, because of the rumors that you are on said list. As much as I try not to see color in others, I am fully aware that as a black man in the IT field, I am a bit of an anomaly. Countless conferences, cohorts, working groups, et cetera, found me being the only black man in a sea of other IT professionals. Aside from even being in the IT field, I realize even more that black men holding higher positions within an organization is even more of an oddity. Maybe it was because of these types of stats that people felt I could not possibly be as qualified as I was described as, and that there had to be something illegal going on for me to be deemed as the best candidate for the position. At this point, I can only assume. Being in the Champaign-Urbana area for almost 20 years and working for many of the large organizations in the area, I am very proud of the work I have accomplished and the name I have built for myself. I've spent the last 15 years of my life in the technology industry, growing my skillset, earning three degrees, getting over a dozen certifications, serving on top working committees for statewide organizations, teaching the next generation of IT professionals as a collegiate faculty member, and arguably the most important, working on myself. Personal development is key. With that, I cannot even begin to describe the words, describe in words, the anguish that comes with spending decades creating a name for myself and coming into an organization that prides itself for being about, all about racial equity, only to have my name dragged through the mud as being a name on a blacklist. In the board's response to the argument, there was a statement that mentioned race played no part in the name of the people included on the list. However, this list wasn't anything that was randomized, nor was it a blanket list covering all new hires. It was a hand-picked list of individuals. The fact that the large majority of these individuals were people of color is hard to shrug off as a simple coincidence. Whether from the board itself or from the people who provided this information to the board, it's very difficult to accept this as something that wasn't racially motivated. Again, I literally had pages more to say, but to keep it in short, I will wrap up with this. For an organization that claims a strong focus on attracting and retaining people of color, what exactly is the board going to do in the wake of this blacklist? Ignoring the leaking of the information, whether intentional or not, the fact that this type of audit was even authorized is troubling. If race wasn't a factor in regards to which names were put on the list, it definitely has become a part of the outcome. Attempting to ignore the fact that the list was largely minority, the board may have been colorblind, but I think it should have been more color-conscious. Again, the leaking of the information even before this article has led to many minority new hires being placed in a toxic work environment, whether or not they were on the list, and additionally, I can only imagine the disgust of minorities considering to apply for a job in the district when they see stories of blacklist and minority reports in news articles. As a start for making some sort of amends, I am formally requesting that the board contact every person on the blacklist, even people not on the blacklist who think they might be, and include a name of the board member who added them to the blacklist, along with the reason why they were on the blacklist. The district desperately needs and deserves full transparency from the board regarding this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Lori has one sheet coming up behind that. Two? Okay. Make sure they're filled out, because this one has nothing on it except his name. Yeah. Tina Wobley, and behind Tina will be Guadalupe Pederoni. Pecconi? Pecconi.
Hi, my name is Tina Hubri, and I just have some questions that I want to propose after the recent articles that have been published and the responses to that published, those published articles. So my first question, first and foremost, is I'm curious, and I know that you can't answer me right now, so I'm going to put these questions out there and hopefully get some answers, and I will send you this in an email. I want to know point-blank if Lee Gaines was correct when she stated, quote, "Nearly all the positions targeted by the audit were held by black staff members." I would like to know if Lee Gaines was correct when she stated, quote, "The positions encompassed about three dozen staff members hired in the past 18 months," unquote, "which, quote, 'represent a fraction of the more than 500 positions filled by the district during that time period,'" end quote. So my assumption is that if there's concerns, the concerns that you mentioned in the statement regarding the article, my assumption is that when there's concerns that come to your attention, especially a lot of concerns about a similar topic, that you would look into those concerns at great length. And so if Lee Gaines was correct with her statements about nearly all positions targeted by the audit being held by black staff members, I would imagine that looking into that, into the concerns before conducting the audit, you would have been able to notice that most of the positions that were in question were actually held by people of color. And so while the positions were what you're saying was brought to your attention with the concerns, which is what you said in the response, I'm questioning whether, how the fact that, if Lee Gaines was correct, how the fact that that went missed and unacknowledged. And then you also stated in your immediate release to members of the Urbana District 116 community, you stated, quote, "Race played no role in determining which positions were to be examined," unquote. But Lee Gaines refers to an anonymous letter in her article that states, quote, "Many people in the district feel that positions are being cut to hire people of color in order for the district to be more diverse," unquote. So my question is, are there other letters that have articulated these types of race-related concerns? And if so, then I would question the idea of race not playing a role in determining it, maybe for other people, whether or not it was for you. So then I'm curious as to whether or not board members share those concerns as to positions being cut to hire more people of color, because right now, the way that this is all looking makes me feel like that's possible. And obviously, I don't think that we agree that that would be the Urbana way. So I'm going to go on the assumption that the Board of Education doesn't agree with those concerns about positions being, you know, eliminated due to hiring of people of color. But my question is, when the positions were brought to your attention and you assumably looked into those things before going to legal counsel, why was that not a red flag? The fact that those positions were held by people of color? So I assume that as a board, you look into these positions before you sought legal counsel, and then if they were, you would have been able to see that race as part of your preliminary research before seeking legal counsel. And so then, again, going back to my original question, if Lee Gaines was correct, I'm curious why legal counsel would still be consulted before looking into the potential additional motivations by others for bringing those concerns to you. This is all very complicated, but, you know, it's complicated. So let's say that Lee Gaines was incorrect when she said, quote, "Nearly all the positions targeted by the audit were held by black staff members," unquote. A couple of questions I have would be, were all the board members in agreement to move forward with the audit originally? Was there a vote for that? And I don't understand board politics and legality, so if the vote wasn't necessary, was it something that was discussed, maybe in a closed meeting or in an open meeting? And then if it was discussed in a closed meeting, was the public notified of that in the way that we would be when positions are being discussed or expulsions are being discussed? You know, we get like a snippet of the general topic. So I'm curious if this was something discussed in a closed board meeting, whether or not that was notified. And then finally, I'm just curious as to what steps are taken before legal counsel gets brought in. I'd like to know if this legal examination is a typical process to addressing concerns that are brought forth to the board in this manner? And if so, I'm curious what other situations have resulted in audits performed by legal counsel, which I can only imagine is going to end up costing the district a lot of taxpayer dollars, which I realize today's article, which I haven't had a chance to dissect yet, articulates that we haven't been billed for that yet, so I'd be curious what that is on the outset. And finally, I'd like to know what kind of comparison the current practices that are in question have been compared to all other former practices a decade ago? Like, I'd be interested in a very long-term examination of hiring practices compared to right now, but then compared to five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago. Where did that begin? Where did the concerns actually begin? Because I'm not sure if that is part of it. So I would appreciate answers. I will send you that in an email, and I appreciate your time for us.
Thank you.
And following her will be Courtney Correthers. And if there are any more sheets, could you bring them up, please?
Hello, my name is Guadalupe Riconi. I'm the Director of the Elementary Bilingual Programs for Urbana School District 116. I will be reading to the record a letter that I have submitted to you earlier today. "To the Board of Education. I write to you today to address my concerns in regards to your commitment to the district's equity mission and strategic plan. Today you are planning to vote on a statement reaffirming your commitment to the equity work that the district has been doing. I would like to specifically address the section of your statement that states as follows. Whereas the results of the equity audit presented to the Board of Education on March 6, 2018, presented new district commitments to review policies, procedures, and structures through an equity lens, supply culturally responsive professional development, and aggressively recruit and retain staff with a goal of having the background of district staff match the background of the students it serves. And now therefore be it resolved, Section 3, the Board of Education recognizes that the district's racial equity goals are most effectively attained through the strategic plan focused areas approved by the Board of Education in spring 2018. Student academic achievement and instruction, district culture, administration, faculty and staff, and community and family relationships. The strategic plan goal that focuses on admin, faculty, and staff capacity specifically states that we will increase the number and percentage of administrators, faculty, and staff of color who are recruited, interviewed, hired, retained, and developed as leaders to reflect the demographic of the school population. I would like to ask you then, if you are in support of the strategic plan goals, why has the Board of Education been questioning the practices that allow us to achieve these goals? I personally feel that once the district has begun to implement practices that have allowed us to recruit and hire more staff of color that better reflect the demographic of our students, we have had those practices questioned by staff, community, and board members. This questioning has gone so far as to actually allow some of you, the board, to justify an investigation into the hiring practices of our school district. As a person of color and as a woman, I have often had to face scrutiny and questioning about my education and experience in the workplace. Until recently, I felt that Urbana was a place that this did not happen. This investigation has prompted me to feel that at any point when the board, staff, or community feels that the district's staff and administration has become too black or brown, that the credentials of those employees must be called into question. While you have stated that it was not your intent to focus on the race of the candidates in question, once it became apparent to you that all of those candidates that were being questioned were people of color, this investigation became about race. To normalize such a racialized practice is to demonstrate that the Urbana School District 116 Board of Education is all about saying the word equity, but not about implementing equity." Thank you.
Thank you. The next person, I called your name. Are you present? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Courtney Correthers. I am a minister of the church. All my children are grown, but I am very interactive with a lot of the young men and women in our community that go to the public schools here. One of the biggest issues that I'm hearing and working with other children are the expelling of students at school. My concern is that we are teaching children our community value, respect, and also we're teaching and trying to encourage a behavior that says, ignore fighting, gangs, or activities of mischievousness. Working with some of the students, we have some students that have been expelled that are A students, honor students, respected by teachers and people in the community because of bullying practices. And they're asking me as a minister or leader of the community, well, when do we stop resisting? Because we're still getting in trouble as if it's our fault. We teach of a story in the Bible, and I won't preach to you, but I have to make this Bible, this practice, this situation applicable. Two women who had a child during the time of depression in the city. One woman said to another woman, "Let us boil your child and eat your child today and on tomorrow, we'll eat my child." Well, when the child was eaten, the mother's child who was eating that night, the other woman hid her child. And they went to the king and said, "What is it for me to do? We have nothing here to help." I do not see our society as not being able to help with all the counseling. And in psychology, we have to immediately expel a student who was a known honorable student because of some other girls or boys fighting her that has not been resolved by the teachers in her school. So my concern is, I have worked with schools and as a leader in the community, as a minister, other schools have in place where they give credible witness to a student's character. I have not heard of that. It's here where they can come in and say, "I will vouch my character for this child, he or she, if she's allowed to get back in school." So my concern is, are there going to be any, I know you can't answer, but my concern is, are there going to be anything implemented in the near future for children who are honorable students, respecting and do have character witnesses that can speak or vouch for them? Because we don't want to keep eating one child and leave another child in desperate hope where there's a lack of home integrity in the sense that single mothers are working, they're looking for things to do in society, and then to be expelled from a school to restart all over. It kind of sets the spiritual atmosphere of their life and the societal atmosphere and the hypocritical state that when you do good, you're looked upon as being evil, and when you do evil, you're looked upon as being good. Thank you.
We'll make sure you get a student handbook.
Thank you.
Okay. Call for an executive meeting session after this current meeting. There will be an executive session after this meeting for the purpose of appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its We need a motion now to approve the agenda.
I motion to approve the agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now, we're going to go into a public hearing, so at this time, I would like to open up the public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to sell 3,002 million worth of working cash funds, bonds. So is there anyone that wants to come forward? 3,200,000. Anyone to come forward? This is your chance. Having no comments, I declare the public hearing closed. So administrator reports, Carol, I'll start with you, to share any more information regarding your proposed levy.
Thank you.
That's up for approval.
Yes. At the last meeting, I gave the board a little bit of information on the proposed levy. And there was more in your packet tonight, but as you know, the hospital exemption case is still awaiting a final decision. And as I told the board last meeting, in order to capture that new construction, if it would happen to come on, we need to balloon levy. And in no way is this going to have any negative consequences if that doesn't happen. It's just, in case it happens, we are prepared, we can always go back before February and make any adjustments to our tax rate that we want to at that time. But right now, with this still being an unknown, I would recommend that we do the balloon levy just so that we have that opportunity in case the hospital do lose their exemptions and end up coming back on the tax rolls. As I stated in my memo to the board, if no decision is made, because our CPI was only 2.1 percent, there's, under tax caps, we're going to be limited to the CPI. And the normal new construction, which I'm estimating at about 7 million, if Carl would come on, and the hospitals would come on, Carl and Provena or OSF, that's 111 million of EAV that would be coming back on the tax rolls with the hospitals. So it's important that we do the balloon levy to capture that in case that does happen. So that's why you'll see the levy is actually for 44,301,000. And I did provide at your place the color, just to give you a history. It kind of shows what we levy every year versus what we actually get. And that shows that last year, we levied 42.8 million, but we only received in actual dollars 34 million. So it just shows that even though we levy it, doesn't mean we're going to get that. So although we're going to have to publicize a 29, or last year, we publicized a 29, almost 30 percent increase, we only received 3.48 percent over what we got the previous year. So this year, we're going to be doing the same thing. We're going to be publicizing a 29.9 percent increase, but if nothing happens with the hospital case, I'm estimating we're going to get 2.1 plus the new construction, which would normally be around the 7 million. So recommending the balloon levy. The one thing I wanted to point out with this as well is, because the 2002 bonds are paid off, no matter what happens, our rate is still going to go down an estimated 32 cents. So that rate decrease we've been talking about for years as naturally going to happen to our tax rate is going to happen this year. So for a person who owns a $100,000 home, that's about $106 in taxes, that your taxes will be going down, again, depending on what happens to your EAV and anything particular to that home. So that's good news for Urbana taxpayers. So tonight, we're going to approve just the proposed levy, so as long as you're okay with the levy I'm proposing, we will put that in the newspaper. And again, it's going to look like a big increase, but if you get any questions from anybody, understand the reason for doing that is just to be able, just in case, the hospitals would come back on the tax rolls and to capture that, and that we would have the opportunity, as I stated at the last meeting, up until the end of February, to go back and make any adjustments to that. And also what I stated before, the information about if we want to make any adjustments to ONM and increasing, as far as how we're going to help with the deficit in ONM, if we wanted to increase any levy in that fund, we would still have that ability, because as you can see, you know, we received 2 million or a million, I levied 3.7 last year, I'm levying 5.2. So I mean, there's enough of an increase there that if we wanted to put more money in ONM, we have the ability to do that. So are there any questions?
Do you, board, do you have any questions for her? And is this something that we're supposed to vote on tonight?
It will be later on in the agenda. I'm actually voting just the proposed.
Okay. So you all need to ask your questions. Peggy, did you have one?
No, she answered at last meeting.
Okay.
And then at the business meeting in December.
Yeah, I remember that.
We will actually approve the tax levy resolution that we have to file with the board, and have our public hearing at that time as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, Don, so you need to introduce who we have this evening on the school improvement plan.
Yes. We have two school improvement plans tonight, and the first is going to be Danielle Jackson, Principal of Dr. Preston L. Williams Junior Elementary School. And she's joined by Adriana Ochoa, who's the Assistant Principal. Let me begin by thanking everyone for being here on a night right before a long holiday weekend. So we appreciate the people who are presenting and the people who came out to watch the meeting.
Good evening. Thank you so much for your time. Happy holidays to all of you. At Dr. Williams, and it's going to go ahead and come on up as the light brightens, we are a school where everybody is somebody. And so we would like to take an opportunity to share with you our goals for the year and to give you a little more information about our school. Our student enrollment is 460 students. We currently have 22 classrooms. We have nine classrooms that are dual-language, and our dual-language program does span from kindergarten through fifth grade. We have a lot of extended learning opportunities, and we have a number of community partnerships that we have developed over the years. One of the major programs that support our students is our Splash Junior Program. We have four sessions throughout the school year, and we have a summer session which our students are able to attend. I will go in more detail about some of the opportunities that our students have with that program. We are fortunate to have an Illini mentoring site location, to have CU one-to-one mentors available to our students after school. We are partnered with the University of Illinois, the Urbana Free Library, Illinois State University. We are partnered with the University of Illinois, the Urbana Free Library, Illinois State University. We have America Reads and America Counts tutors who come into our buildings every day to support our students. And we are also partnered with the Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center. Some additional community partnerships that we have is the St. Thomas Moore High School. We have a group of students who come out weekly to support several of our classrooms, um, and that's an amazing partnership that we have. We've had that now for two years. We have partnered with the Creanart Center of Performing Arts. Every school year, all of our students have an opportunity to have a fine arts experience, whether it be at the school. We have had a number of events held at the school and some of which where our students are actually going out to the Creanart Center of Performing Arts and seeing wonderfully amazing, um, performances and events that are hosted throughout the school year, which is an amazing opportunity for us. And we are also partnered with the Art Museum. So we have students who have just come back from Cam Wham, who have had an opportunity to have art displayed, they've gone and done a week-long of learning, and it's an amazing opportunity, um, through grants that our teachers have written for them to go and experience those things. We also have a partnership with the Rotary Club. They continue to donate book, live, um, excuse me, dictionaries, both Spanish and English, for our students who are in third grade, and every year, they come out and talk to us about the need to have those books and they make a commitment to join us yearly. We are partnered with the American Legion Post 559, and we've also had an ongoing partnership with CrossPoint. One of the focuses of our school, and I believe all schools, is that we are here to teach the whole child. So not only are we focused on the academics, we're focused on social engagement, making sure that we have high physical activity, and that we are always being mindful of emotional development and how to support our students' emotional needs. Splash Junior is an opportunity that all of our students are provided, and we have approximately seventy to seventy-five students each session who are supported and able to participate in this event. Through that grant-funded program, we have community partnerships with the Prairie Center, the Urbana Park District, Jade Dragons Martial Arts, Jade Dragons Dance, and the Anita Purvis Center. Within these sessions, we have approximately seven classroom teachers who stay after school to work with our students on any given night. We have two instructors who are there to also support through, like the Jade's Martial Arts, they come and teach the students martial arts. We also have eight support staff who are staying on a regular basis, two secretarial staff who serve as registrars, and three coordinators who are also members of our Within the sessions offered, one of the things that we talked about is teaching the whole child. I will not read all of these to you, but if you look, there are a variety of things offered to students that do encompass ensuring that we are teaching to the whole child. Within session one, we were able to serve seventy-five students, and in session two, we were able to serve seventy-one students, of which in the next couple of weeks, we expect that our waitlist students will be able to come in. We do have a waitlist every session because we have so many students and families who would like to participate in this program. And I'm sure you all know that during Splash, students are also provided a light dinner, which is a nice way to support them going home, having at least had a snack, and not being immediately hungry when they walk through the door, as most of our kids are. When we talk about our academic goals, our focus for the year has been on writing. Last year, I did come to you and talk to you about our initial focus on writing, and we have found that we need to go deeper in that focus. So as a building, we are looking to create pieces of writing with our students across a variety of topics and a number of genres in order for them to participate in our writer's workshop process. Students are also going to have an opportunity to critique their own writing and the writing of their peers. What would this look like when we have it fully implemented? Our staff will be working collaboratively to look at student samples, analyze those results, and also have students evaluating their progress and sharing that progress with our staff in a universal way. Families would be invited to attend open house writing-style events where they're welcome to come and actually see what writer's workshop looks like. So not just hearing what is writer's workshop, but come in, participate, help with that brainstorming, maybe help with peer edit, so they can really have that hands-on experience. Um, I know when I was in school, we didn't necessarily use writer's workshop. We did use structured writing, so we're always trying to encourage families to come in and see. It's not that different, but exactly what we're having students work on. And within this, students are collaboratively working through that process and supporting their peers through that as well, as they collaborate and have conferences with their teachers. Our focus is also on the emotional and behavioral development of our students. Our goal, as we set forth, to look at continuing our racial equity work and our commitment to moving our students further past our strong core, is that we want to look at maximizing the amount of time that students are within the classroom and creating a behavior system that does not overrepresent any racial group. When we look at how this will be fully implemented, we are continuing to teach our staff and our students how to use de-escalation strategies in those moments of maybe intense emotions or moments of crisis. We're asking that our staff will engage more in a restorative approach to student behavior, so having those dialogues, so that before a student comes back into the room, you're restoring and repairing that relationship so that we can all move back to the learning. Families will understand that classrooms and school expectations are related to our specific behavioral goals, that we're aware that we use de-escalation strategies that are not only there to support students while they're at school, but also while they're at home, which can also be needed. Students will have that opportunity to reflect upon not only problem-solving strategies that they'll use in the classroom, but also in hopes that as they apply those skills, it will decrease the number of referrals that we would see within our building over time. And lastly, when that is fully implemented, we would expect that our referrals will not only match our gender dat- demographics of the school, but also that we are not having any specific group overrepresented in the number of referrals that are received. Social-emotional learning is a critical part of our students' development as well as our own personal development in our day-to-day life. Our school culture is focused on positive, respectful relationships with students, family members, and of course colleagues. We are continuously working to ensure that our students are using appropriate problem-solving strategies as issues arise. We tell our students all the time, "It's okay to be mad," and we realize that you are mad, but what are the strategies and the steps that we can take to just de-escalate and ensure that we can move forward in the most successful way? So we know that this is something that needs to occur every day. We do have a structure in which social-emotional learning is the start of our day, immediately following breakfast in the classroom. From eight-thirty to nine o'clock, the full building structure is to support social-emotional learning throughout the school. We also want to make sure that we're creating the leaders of tomorrow. As an elementary building, ensuring that our students are prepared to go into the Urbana Middle School, we want to give them opportunities to be on a student council where they have a voice and they can advocate for themselves, speak up about things that are important to them, and truly develop their sense of student leadership. Also have safety patrol that is there to ensure the safety of our kids in the morning as they arrive to the school and to support the adults who are helping with supervision. So we really try to make sure that we are empowering our students each and every day to have an active and engaging part of our school community. Within our school improvement team, we have a variety of people that are participants. Myself is, uh, is of course on the school improvement team. We have Ms. Ochoa, our assistant principal, who is on our team. And although these members were not all able to come out tonight, we want to say a special thanks to Ms. Imani Carr, our fifth grade teacher and our face coordinator, Ms. Kathleen Carter, who is our instructional coach, and she's one of our professional development cadre leaders, Mr. Brian Lake, who is an instructional coach and our UEA president, Ms. Stevie John, who is a kindergarten teacher as well as a professional development cadre leader, Ms. Jeanette Delgado, who is a kindergarten dual-language teacher and also one of our PD cadre leaders. And of course, we have support from Ms. Deion Webster, who we appreciate greatly, who is our central office support staff member. I know we gave a lot of information to you. I know it is only a glimpse of what it looks like and feels like in the Dr. Williams School. We invite you to, of course, come by anytime and really get the feel of our building. We are excited to make sure that every day it feels like love within the walls, that it is feeling of family and community, and we hope that when you have an opportunity to stop by, that that is absolutely how you feel in our school. At this time, I'd like to open it up for any questions?
More questions?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, Peggy.
Thank you for an inspiring presentation. I really appreciate it. It's exciting to see all the partnerships you have in the community, I mean, many that I didn't know about. One of the things that intrigued me, though, is your student council, cause, I mean, to my knowledge, most of the elementaries don't have student council unless it's to ha- to happened in just recent times, and that, I agree, what a great opportunity to empower children to be young leaders. I'm just curious how that works. I mean, do you like have annual campaigns and do children run for council president? And, and then what do they discuss?
So one of the things that I noticed in looking at the Urbana Middle School Student Council is we had an underrepresentation of our students who actually sought out to participate in that group. So I became very reflective on how we could support students, not only knowing that it's an available option, but also empowering them through the process. So we did have them fill out an application and get a teacher recommendation for them to participate. And so we will take time, I explain it to them, they will give up some of, some of their recess and their playtime to just talk. But really, one of our school improvement goals was to make sure that we do have student voice on there. So one of the topics that we'll be discussing is how our PBIS incentives, how effective they are, are they exciting and motivating to our students? And then if they have ideas that we haven't thought of, although we think that they're very excited about all the incentives we provide, sometimes it takes a student to help us remember what really is motivating to them. So we want to make sure that it is something that they're interested in and hopefully excited about when we celebrate each month. So there'll be a variety of topics, some of which will also be helping us reflect upon not only our goals, but how we can get student voice into our school improvement plan.
Excellent idea. Thanks for being so innovative. It's also exciting to see how many of your classrooms are dual-language. I mean, nine out of twenty-two, so almost half.
Yes.
I mean, a little less than half, but still, how exciting to see that growth over the, the last few years, so.
Yes.
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
I really appreciate your focus on writing. I think that's a, a skill that obviously all our children need going forward. I was wondering, how you, are you tracking student growth and how are you, are you using that data kind of to feedback to and improve your methodologies from semester to semester, year to year?
Sure. So, um, we are using the writing pathways and Lucy Cockins, so we have actually developed a spreadsheet so that teachers can do, basically record their on-demand prop scores, so that we compare that data over time. So their initial on-demand score prior to any instruction, and then a post-score, and then as we go throughout each genre and unit, we're expecting to see growth as they continue that. So this is the first year we've used this structure, so I hope to kind of find, is it effective, does it work for us, and then how could we, um, change it in the future to make sure it's showing everything that we need? So it essentially gives us an overall score, but also individual scores on specific capitalization, punctuation, voice, and things like that, so we can give direct feedback to the students. Thank you.
Anne?
Um, I thank you for the presentation. Um, I'm excited to know that you're working on the social-emotional learning aspect of your, um, you know, whole child, um, education, and I just want to know, you say it's not fully implemented, where are you right now? And can you give us a little bit more detail about what, what progress you've already made?
For social-emotional learning?
Yeah, I mean, what, what kind of supports are you giving to the students that you're seeing results with for this year?
I apologize if I said it wasn't fully implemented. We have had social-emotional learning implemented for a number of years. So our structural change for this year was just that we have all classes providing that instruction at the same time for consistency, so that's the way they start their day. That was the new change, but we have actually provided social-emotional supports. We have calming boxes in almost every, in all classrooms, so if a student were to need a break and just kind of need a quiet space to redirect, play with putty or play with foam, to kind of pull out those emotions so that they can get back to learning. Um, we have a very well-trained staff on how to interact with students and support their emotional needs with minor redirection so that they can stay engaged in learning. So that does look like, um, a number of things within every classroom, um, making sure that you know that students have a place. Many of our classrooms have tents, so it's not just like a little desk that looks very cold, but it looks like a warm nurturing environment for students to go. Flexible seating is also a way to support students' social and emotional needs, so that as they are needing to kind of get some energy out, hopefully, they wouldn't even need to leave their engagement activity, that they could just bounce on a ball to support them within the room. So I do apologize if I stated it wasn't fully implemented. Um, we have social-emotional learning that has been within our district for years. We utilize Second Step as a curriculum, and we also use the morning meeting book. So my deepest apologies.
No, 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 no.
It's been implemented for a number of years in accordance with the district policy and the strategic plan.
No, no, but I apologize. I just wanted to know, you know, if you'd seen great improvements this year or what kinds of changes you've seen or are implementing that, you know, are even better.
We, on a regular basis, see students who are able to utilize using their words as opposed to expressing frustration in an aggressive way. And then in moments of crisis, even being able to tell them, "What do I need you to do?" And even a signal like this, they know to say, "Use my words." So rather than expressing a huge amount of frustration, we might just give them time and space and allow them an opportunity to calm down before trying to engage, which is also not the ideal way to interact with a student when they're escalated. So making sure that we know those strategies and techniques so that we are not continuing to escalate a student even further. So we've had ongoing training for years to make sure we recognize that in students and hopefully can catch it before they get to a point of complete escalation.
Right. Well, thank you. I appreciate hearing that.
Are there any, any more questions or comments? I just think you're doing a great job. Like I told you, I get a report from my goddaughter. And so I, I stopped reading books, cause you know how you skip over stuff? She'll go back and tell me what I skipped over, based on you all to, teaching her, and she speaks Spanish too, so I appreciate that. And she was telling me about some of the leaderships they have at school. They've even learned, when they were in kindergarten, how to pick out their own meals, uh, so they get a choice of what they want, so they become very independent. So I'm real pri- uh, pleased with Dr. Preston Williams School and also with the family engagement piece, because it seems like Prairie families really come out and participate too. I've seen a lot of that. So that's really great. I know Deion had a lot to do with it, but still, uh, every time I see, I see all these parents doing things in the school, some of them, so that's great. Keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to say something, sorry. And we, we do invite you to come and see. That's one thing I told her, I said, "Our teachers do so many great things for our students, and our students are wonderful." So it would be nice to see more faces from the board, seeing what we're doing out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Don, before you introduce, I want to apologize again to Austin, who's running our camera. Uh, Panius, and are you in school, Austin, at Urbana?
No.
No? You're working with Jason?
Right.
Yes, I appreciate you all doing it, so thank you.
Got it. All right. Um, so up next is Jen Roan, who's the principal of Gerber School that's located on the Cunningham Children Homes campus. And I'm sure that part of your comments tonight will be about some of your exciting news that maybe has to put off a little bit.
Yes.
Yes. I'll let you tell that story.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Um, it's nice to be here tonight with you before the, the Thanksgiving holiday. Um, I want to share a little bit about our wonderful school and our, our great program. Um, just a reminder of our mission statement, uh, "We prepare our youth for independent and responsible adulthood through academic vocational and recreational successes in a safe and therapeutic environment." It's wordy, but we believe in every step of it. And a reminder of some of the, the realities and the demographics of Gerber School, since we are a unique program. As Dawn said, um, we're this interesting collaborative between the district and Cunningham Children's Home, and we serve only the students who are residents of Cunningham Children's Home. So we currently, as of today, um, are serving forty-six students in grades five through twelve. So we kind of span that whole elementary through high school range. Um, we are, our students have experienced, um, some pretty extreme trauma in their backgrounds, and most of them have not had a whole lot of school success. Um, many of our kids have bopped around from school to school and have not found it to be a place, um, where they feel valued and, um, and recognized and, and, and feel successful. Approximately eighty-five percent of our kids at any time are DCFS youth in care, um, so that adds to our interesting dynamic. Um, and all of our students receive special education support. We also have a very high mobility rate. Uh, DCFS does not like to keep kids in residential treatment programs any longer than they have to. So the average length of stay is twelve to eighteen months, so that's how long we have kids. The unfortunate part of that is that all, doesn't always align directly to a The unfortunate part of that is that doesn't always align directly to a school year. So, if we have a youth who needs our kind of services, and it's the day before Thanksgiving break, they come. If it's the day before the school year ends, they come. So, that also creates some interesting dynamics for us. But we have an amazing staff, and so our staff have identified two school improvement goals for this year. One of them is very academically based, and because our kids have not had consistent schooling always, and because many of them have other special education needs, reading is an area that is often in need of building in confidence and skill. So, our first goal is that students will be able to read for meeting while increasing comprehension skills across content areas and making progress toward meeting grade-level competency. So, we kind of looked at what we were doing, and some great things were happening in our classrooms directed towards reading. But we felt like we could do even better if we had more consistency through that fifth grade through high school span that we have. So, this summer, all of our teachers came in, and we received training on guided reading and the balanced literacy practices that are being done elsewhere in our district. And we've taken that on as a challenge to implement this school year. Not only did we train our teachers, but we've also been working to empower our teaching assistants. Because of the population we serve, Gerber is blessed with a high number of teaching assistants in every classroom. And those people have great relationships with our kids, and they have amazing skills. And we want to help them better utilize those skills. And we feel like if those TAs are able to help us, then we have greater impact. So, a majority of our TAs joined us for some of the summer training and learned how to do running records and how to better assist with those academic interventions. And then, throughout the school year, we have a literacy interventionist, and she is completing the same AIMS Web benchmarking that many of the other schools are doing, and progress monitoring with that system, as well as using the Fanta's and Pennell Benchmark Assessment System. And then she's taking that data into those classroom teams and saying, hey, you have these students, and this student is really taking off and making progress, but this student is struggling. What can we do to push them farther? And educating not only the teacher, but also those TAs, and brainstorming with them about what's working, what's not working, so that we can try to keep our kids moving forward. You know, as I said in our last slide, we don't have them for very long, so we really want to get the most bang for our buck in that time and really use these research-based interventions to the best of our ability. Our second goal, you guys heard the beginning of this goal last year. This is kind of part two of our transition goal. Because our kids are with us for a really short time, our staff have really been pressed to make sure our students have a successful transition to whatever that next step is, whether they're transitioning to their home of origin, to a foster care placement, to another residential treatment facility. We want them as prepared as possible for all of the pieces of that, be at school, be at life. And so, we recognize that our students are not as prepared for those next transitional steps as we would hope. And so, therefore, we're aiming to target life skills that will benefit our students, so they may successfully transition into complex real-world settings. So, again, this summer, we really worked to develop a full scope and sequence retooling our social skills class. All of our students attend a social skills class, and so we really looked at what soft skills our kids were missing and how we can help them be more successful, whether they transition into our public schools here in our community or elsewhere. And, you know, last year, I talked to you guys, some of those things are as basic as teaching them how to use a napkin when they're eating, because if they're in the cafeteria at Urbana High School, they make themselves a target if they're using their shirt. Or if they're out in the community on a job site, and they're eating their lunch on their break, and then they go back to work and they're covered in ketchup, that's a problem for most employers. So, helping them learn little things like that, that many of our kids have not picked up on. So, table manners and hygiene. We want to help kids set goals, realistic goals, and figure out, you know, what are those steps along the way? Many of our kids, when we talk to them about what they want to be, have those goals about, I want to be an NBA superstar. And unfortunately, there are not that many slots on the NBA. And so, what else can our kids do? And what's realistic? And what is going to make them happy in the long-term future and in that next step? And along with that, how can they regulate their emotions? Because for our kids, often that's a point that trips them up in being successful towards those goals. They can be very impulsive, and we want to help them learn some of those skills Danielle was just talking about, learn how to regulate themselves and self-soothe, so that they can be successful in all environments. This next one was a piece that I know I discussed with you guys last year, the sex education piece. And along with that, relationships, including dating relationships. Unfortunately, our students have often experienced the worst in relationships and have had very traumatic experiences. And from those have a lot of misinformation about what friendships, dating relationships, teacher-student relationships, and sexual relationships can look like. So, we have really been working hard to provide them developmentally appropriate, trauma-sensitiveive information about how to have all of those relationships and be prepared, because the majority of our students are high school-aged, and they are interested in having relationships. And we want them to have safe, healthy relationships in their future. The other piece that we'll be moving into is adding more self-advocacy skills and helping our kids learn how to access community resources. We unfortunately found, when some of our kids transitioned on into independence, that they did not know how to access some of those support services that would be so integral in their success. When students need to start accessing their own medical care, or find mental health services, or support with housing, they didn't know how to do that. No one had had those discussions with them. So, in partnership with their residential staff, we want to really spell that out for them more and help them have some experiences of practicing those kind of things. And along with that, we hope to bring in more guest speakers and also take our kids out into the community more. Our kids have had some very interesting sheltered experiences. You don't often think about DCFS Youth in Care as having, being sheltered, but their exposure to the community is very narrow. And so, like Danielle said, again, taking them places like Cranert is very eye-opening. Taking kids to Peoria's Prairie Wildlife Farm, it's just really cool to give our kids those opportunities to be kids, and also to expand what their exposure is in very positive ways. So, those are our school improvement plans. The other big thing that Dawn alluded to is our new facility. So, I've shown a picture here of our current building and then the facility that is getting real close to completion. I was in there this morning, and it's exciting every time I go in. There are new changes. As you can see from the pictures, my staff are very excited. Most of us have been able to tour through at least once this fall. We were hoping to be able to do our big move over Christmas break, but as tends to happen with these kind of things, unforeseen circumstances are postponing that a little bit. So, we're currently targeting President's Weekend, President's Day Weekend, which will be a mad rush of a weekend for us to do that. But I have faith in my staff, and I have faith that, you know, Cunningham is helping us to line the things up to make that possible. We're very excited about the new facility. It will give us new classroom space, and new office areas. The gym is gorgeous, and the cafeteria space is beautiful, too. And I think it will help us better meet some of the academic behavioral and sensory needs that our students have. I also want to make sure to invite all the board members. Cunningham is planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony for March 23rd, which is right after spring break. We would love to have you there, or if we can work together to arrange a tour beforehand, I would love to take you guys through. I think you'll be just as excited as our staff are to see the great things that are happening there. Any questions for me?
I just want to say thank you. It's been interesting. I live not too far from the site, and every day when I drive by there, I'm just like, oh, they've did this, they've did this. And the workers are working very hard. I see them very early in the morning out there. So, I can't wait to go inside and see what it looks like. I think it'll be a great asset, not only for the children, but also for our community. So, thank you.
I want to thank you for getting into that great presentation. I think you guys really are the unsung heroes of the district. I mean, I don't think people really even realize you guys are part of our district. And also, I don't think people really realize the kind of transitional element that your students have. You have students who can come and go, and your staff has to deal with assessing where they are when they come in and getting them, you know, some of them with them, and they leave and go elsewhere. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else?
A brief question. Yeah. Thank you again for your presentation. The new building sounds very exciting. Will it enable you to take in more students? Is it a bigger footprint of?
Well, our program is pretty much limited by the residential program at Cunningham. So, unless Cunningham were to add more beds in their residential program, our program will stay fairly stable. We are sharing the facility with Cunningham Circle Academy, and it allows them to expand their program somewhat. So, there will be, there are some shared spaces that the two schools will have in common, but they will be on one side and we'll be on the other.
Got you. And the old building, will it be, remain in use for some?
We're not really sure about that. There've been rumors, but nothing confirmed yet.
Nothing that you know of. Okay. Well, thank you. Look forward to the ribbon-cutting. Thanks.
And I just want to say thank you. But tell your kids not to give up, because two of my friends that came out of Cunningham, one did play NBA. And then Phil, yeah, he gives money to you all. And then Phil led the Chicago Parade, based on, he came out of Cunningham, and he's one of your top R&B singers, and has also performed in some movies. They'll tell you any day, those are the two people you need to invite for the kids. Don't tell them to give up on those dreams.
I'll make contact with you for their info.
Because these, I never thought Phil would be, but now he's this big. I'm like, wow. So, it can happen at Cunningham.
Excellent. And our kids need to hear that kind of stuff.
And then Gidget is a social worker, and she came out of Cunningham. So, I know three people from Cunningham that came. So, and they really were in DCFS and all of that, but they could really tell them a story, that you be who you want to be.
That'd be wonderful.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Okay, moving on here. So, we're done with the administrative. We have no communications. We have no policies to review, but we do have some action items. We have the following consent action items this evening. October 16th minutes, 2018 business meeting. October 21st, 2018 special meeting. November 4th, 2018 special meeting. November 6th, 2018 study session. November 10th, 2018 special meeting. Then 11.2, we have the October bills and checks. $1,103,000 for education funds. Operation and maintenance fund bills, $144,000. We have the bond and interest, $530 transportation fund bills, $178,000. We have working cash bonds, $91,000. School facility occupancy tax, $47,000. We have life safety levy, zero payroll, $4,206,519.87. Adult education, $123,000. 11.3, inter-fund loans. The following inter-fund loans will be required to cover the necessary operation cost of the school district until the next meeting of the Board of Education. Amount of loan, $125,000. It's from the working cash fund loan to IMRF. So, Kathy, 11.4, do we have any needed special recognitions or any personnel items? 11.5, approval of activity account. Carol talked to us about it. We didn't have any questions, so moving on. We request approval to create an activity account, Health Occupation Students of America. 11.6, approval of resolution or commitment to racial equity to Urbana School District, Do we have now a motion to approve the consent action items? So, moved?
I'll second that. It's okay. It can stay.
Yeah. Okay. We need a roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins Gay?
Yes.
And President Demmett on phone?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, John. And Brenda, will you read the gifts, please? 12.1.
Alliance Francois de Chicago donated a variety of used books written in French to our DL program at Yankee Ridge. UC Bank helped support monetarily transportation for the 1868 collection study trip. Atman Press, Columbus, Georgia, donated seven copies of Finders Keepers and two copies of India Unveiled to the district. CU Autism Network donated a Sky Curved Swing to Thomas Payne Elementary for use in the sensory room. UHS Boys Basketball Program received the following cash donations. Urbana Alumni Association, $121.95. Area Wide Technologies, Inc., $1,000. And Great Commission and Support Ministries, $1,000. Jane Coontz and Richard Powers donated $50 to the Academic Boosters Club at Urbana High School. I recommend the administration send appropriate thank-yous to the above-mentioned people. And thank you very much for the gifts to our school district.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the gifts?
That we receive the gifts.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Motion passes. We're doing these individually, so 12.2, 2018, 2019 proposed tax levy. Carol Baker, Chief Financial Officer, requested approval for the 2018, 2019 proposed levy. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved. So moved.
And I'll second that.
Okay, Ruthanne, we'll need a roll call on that.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins Gay?
Yes.
And President Demmett?
Yeah.
Okay, 12.3, additional supports for Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School. Approval additional positions for Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School. Supervision and support services. Urbana High School, additional licensed teacher for Restore U Room. Urbana Middle School, additional SRS and authorization to pay teachers for lunch supervision. Do I have a motion to approve item 12.3?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
Discussion, though?
Discussion? Okay.
Sure. I'll just, I'll put in some clarification for the viewing audience and other board. Asked a number of questions, and I collaborated with Dr. Weemelton, Ms. Brown, at Urbana Middle School and Urbana High School. We also went back and looked very carefully at the estimates of how much these would be budgetary adds. And so, the certified teacher in Restore U Room, considering that this is a temporary add and it would only be for the remainder of this year, which approximately would be 113 days left by the time this was posted and hired, if everything went smoothly, that would be approximately thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. So, different, quite a bit lower than the estimates that we had provided at the last meeting. One additional student relations supervisor for UMS, primarily to work at the front kiosk and door and assist with escorting students back and forth to the high school's school-based health center, with, again, approximately 113 days left of school. That would be an estimated cost of fifteen thousand dollars. And then funds to assist, funds for teachers, to pay teachers, to assist with lunch, either supervision or to run lunch groups in their classrooms. Again, that's, that's a little bit of a wider range estimate, but we, Carol and I estimate on the top end, it would be around thirty-one thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay, board members?
I just wanted to say that I'm fully in support of this. There's been some criticism, I think, from what I've heard, that we've added a lot of staff to this, we've added a number of staff coming into this year, but I just wanted to remind the public that the hires, or the plans for hires for the staff for these two buildings, were done by people who were along over the district. And I think it's entirely appropriate for the current staff to be able to make midterm adjustments when, you know, as conditions change and as things are implemented, especially considering that these are temporary positions for the remainder of the academic year. So, I'm definitely fully in support of both of these adds.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I'm in support of this also, and I appreciate your work done and breaking down the numbers for us, because there was quite a differential between what we actually heard at our first read, if you want to say, or our first meeting about this, to now, but I am in favor of this. I think it's very well needed.
Peggy.
Yeah, and I, too, can support this. You know, while at the last meeting, I was quite clear in that I couldn't support the range, the full range of personnel requests made by Dr. Weemelton, Ms. Brown, largely because, well, twofold, because of our other obligations to the district. I mean, we have other, you know, many other budgetary obligations, and my concern about our education funds balance trending in the last few years. But I recognize that these are high priority needs that I think will help the new policy be more effective in those schools, so I wholeheartedly support these two position asks. But I also hope that with the additional staff, while they were hired under different leadership, we do have many highly qualified, you know, staff at both UMS and UHS, and I do hope that with additional support and training, that they will effectively work together to help bring some stability to those two schools. So, I kind of put that out as a, as an encouragement to all of us to be patient and to put some more effort into support and training so that we can benefit from those new staff. So, yes, I wholeheartedly support those two particular high priority items.
Okay. Ruthanne?
Oh, I'm for.
Okay, Anne? Anne, I'm definitely for anything to support administrative decisions that's going to make it better for them, because we hired two good people in those positions. So, we as the board have to go and make sure they're getting the support they need. We can't be in the buildings all the time, because we work, but at least give them the other support that they need. So, I fully go along with it, too. Price is so much different.
Yeah.
Hundred thousand versus thirty-one?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I definitely go with it. John, did you want to say anything?
Yes, thank you. I also intend to support this with the understanding that it is a temporary add for this year to try to resolve some of the issues that we are currently facing at the secondary level.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you. So, right now, we need a roll call on this.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes.
Yes.
And President Demmett?
Yeah.
All right. Let's see. 13.4.
12.4.
Call for future special executive meetings.
12.4.
12.4.
Oh, okay, appointment of board communications officer. And that's very important, because this person will be the only person that does the board communication, not the vice president. So, we're having a Board of Education to appoint communications officer. Do we need a discussion about it?
I think John could probably speak to this.
Okay, John, I'm gonna let you talk on that, when you're the president.
Sure. Normally, this duty falls to the president of the board, but considering where I am health-wise at the moment, I think it's important that we have a board spokesperson. There's issues now, and there's going to be issues coming up that require a board response, and this will help us maintain good relation, good public relationships with our community.
All right, thank you.
Just one quick clarification, John. Would I understand that it's still the board president's purview on how to handle media requests, but the communications officer then will be delegated to respond?
That's correct.
And that this position is a temporary one? We don't know the time, exact time period, but intended to be temporary as well?
Yes.
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 It's temporary until the doctor okay's my clearance.
Okay.
Right.
Well, I think it's an excellent idea.
Yes. I have a busy schedule, so I'm not as available as some people on the board. So, it's not like I'm neglecting my duties, but we need someone that's going to be able to back us up and talk for us. And I told them personally, I would not be available to do so right now. Got two more weeks, and then I'll be good. Okay, so, how do we want to go about this? As a board, have we decided, or do we want to discuss?
Do we have volunteers?
We have volunteers.
Or a slate of candidates?
I'd like to nominate Paul.
And that's what I was going to say, too.
Because he's been working in several of these capacities with John in recent months, really. And I know who's interested in him.
And Paul's been doing a lot, a lot of hours of time, because we don't get paid for this. And Paul has put in the time, and he knows everything because he's there. So, I think personally, it would be a good choice, so I'll go, Ruthanne, you can go around.
Well, first of all, Peggy has nominated him, and he needs to have a second for the nomination.
We need a second. Okay, that would be you.
I'll second.
John second.
I'll let John do it.
That's fine.
Okay. So, then, do we need a roll call, or do I just?
Well, since we had a nomination, we're starting a slate, so is there a second nomination?
Is there a second nomination? There is none? Move on.
Okay. So, we are going to be voting.
You're the secretary. Tell me who we're going to be.
Approval or non-approval of Paul being our board communications officer. Let's start with Member Carter.
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Plasky? You may vote for yourself if you like.
Would you like to do this?
Yes, I'll do it.
That's true. You know what, you're right. We did not ask you if you accepted the nomination.
We sure did. We just.
I missed a step. You're right. I was trying to get the other stuff in, and we missed a step, but oh, well. Member Fisher votes yes. Vice President Rollins Gay?
Yes.
And President Demmett?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, now, for public knowledge, all communications do not come to any of us but Paul Plasky.
No, 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 the board president is responsible.
Or the board president.
Still responsible for determining how the board responds.
Well, he's still responsible, but he'll direct them.
To media requests, but he can delegate to me.
Because John is still moving.
Right. Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving along now. So, we have the appointment, so there are no future calls for, except tonight, we have our special executive meeting. Superintendent's report, Don?
Yes, I have a number of things. All of them, I think, fit in a theme of thankfulness on this eve of our Thanksgiving holiday. We had a number of celebrations that came across my desk over the last week, and I'd like to give some special shout-outs. First of all, the Community Impact Awards were given out by the local JC of, JCs? Is that who gave them?
Junior League of Women?
Junior League, Junior League of Champaign County. And the Junior League's Community Impact Awards were given out at the gala on November 17th. We had a couple of very key figures. One was Principal of Urbana Early Childhood School, Chris Bowles. So, give it up for Chris. We also had the parent liaison for the district, Janice Mitchell.
Okay.
And her Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, her other full-time job was recognized as an organization as well. And then, just a couple names that are either, well, they're all past employees or graduates. I just thought Urbana was very well represented here. Barbara Linder, Anha Ho, Erin Grace Watson, Shirley Alonso. We had a number of people who were recognized by that, who have supported our students and families over the years. The next shout-out that I want to give is to Karen DeBusch and the Urbana Middle School Band Program. The Urbana Middle School Band Program was listed as one of the five division winners for the 2018-19 Dr. William P. Foster Project Award of Excellence. The project foster division chairs have deliberated and chosen five division winners who are now eligible for the national award, which will be announced at the Midwest Clinic on December 20th at 8:30 PM. And Urbana Middle School Band was chosen as one of those winners, and only five in the state. So, congratulations, Urbana Middle School Band. And I think.
Five in the country, Joe says.
Five in the country? I'm sorry, I was reading too quickly. Five in the country, so.
Oh, there we go.
Louder applause.
Holy cow.
And then, one that I did not have on my desk last week, but was a Teacher of the Week right before our last board meeting. Ladonna Helm, first grade teacher at Leo Elementary, was Teacher of the Week for the News Gazette on October 24th. And I sent her a little congratulatory email, and I saw it going all over social media. And Ladonna is well-deserving of that, of that recognition, so. And then, finally, because it is Thanksgiving, I wouldn't, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about the fact that on Thursday, Urbana High School, the Student Senate, is hosting its 47th annual Thanksgiving dinner. And the dinner will be held on Thanksgiving Day, Thursday, November 22nd, at Urbana High School in the Commons from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. There are no reservations required. Donations are welcomed and may be sent to Urbana High School Student Senate. If you need transportation to the dinner or would like to volunteer, please call Urbana High School's Student Senate Office at 384-3505, extension 4036, or you can call the cell phone number, 708-580-6396. And that, if you need a ride, you need to call before 3:00 PM today. Maybe.
Uh-oh.
I will check. I think it's on Thursday. They do a wonderful job with rides. It's an amazing event. It's open to anyone in the community. Many times, it's families. Sometimes, it's university students who are out of their dorms for the break and have no place else to go. And sometimes, it's people from the community who just want to be with other people celebrating on Thanksgiving. And if you have a chance, even if you don't plan to eat there, it's sometimes nice just to stop by and see the, see the, the community that happens at Urbana on Thanksgiving. And one of the things, when I do tours for the reunion groups, that's one of the first questions that gets asked by the tour groups, is, are you still doing the Thanksgiving dinner? And then, it goes into stories of who cooked what in which kitchen, and which teacher, usually Mr. Lemons, who was there supervising. So, that's my superintendent's report. I hope everyone has a peaceful and restful rest of your week and a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, so, any board reports? And we went to.
Are we going on with the FOIAs?
Oh. We have to read all of those. Read all the FOIAs.
I will summarize the FOIAs for you, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I had my other papers in front of me here, so.
Here.
So. I need an extra-large glass of water. FOIAs. We had a FOIA from Lindsay Jones in the News Gazette, data related to individual student disciplinary referrals and offenses recorded in Skyward for the time period August 15th to September 15th, 2017, for Urbana Middle School. The same data for Urbana Middle School data, August 15th to September 15th, 2018. And then, all data related to individual student disciplinary data and offenses, major or minor, that are recorded in databases other than Skyward. And then, Smart Procure, excuse me, asked for purchasing records from July 10th, 2018, to the current. Team All-In asked for copies of emails, letters, and other communication between Board of Education member and any Urbana School District staff regarding the blacklist audit, in quotes, between March 1st, 2018, and October 17th, 2018. Received the number of people on that said list, broken down by race, list of names on that list, information regarding the amount of money spent on attorney fees regarding the auditing of our newly hired staff, a list of all USD 116 staff hired between March 2018 and October 18th, 2018, whose qualifications, credentials, and other certifications required have been audited or otherwise researched by attorneys on behalf of Urbana School Board, Board of Education, or on behalf of Urbana School District. Documentation of any written, electronic, or documented verbal communication to or from members of the Board of Education regarding the need to verify the qualifications of staff hired between March 2018 and October 18th, 2018, when a vote was held to conduct such audits, or when these audits were approved, the amount of district personal and personal funds spent on attorney fees for the above actions. James Kraft asked for the text, emails, and other written or recorded information that had any of these words included, black, African-American, AA, hiring, closed session, open session, superintendent, or vote between Anha. Black, African-American, AA, hiring, closed session, open session, superintendent, or vote between Ann Hall and Peggy Patton between February first and October nineteenth of this year. All-In For You asked for following information from each member of the Urbana School District Board of Education. College degrees, experience in the field of education, all current and previous job experience, all other school board positions in other districts, and all other public government positions held. Dr. Kevin Omara requested information for your current superintendent, years of service as superintendent, base salary, board-paid TRS contribution, if any, board-paid health or insurance contribution, if any, board-paid retirement benefits, annuity or other, if any, number of annual sick days, number of annual vacation days, other compensation benefits payments, if any. And then Erin Eads from WCIA asked for the contents of all audits, reports concerning Urbana School District one-sixteen and/or its Board of Education that were conducted by Robin Schwartz. She itemized costs of those audits to the district or list of payments made in exchange for the audits. Those are all the audits that have been finished and closed. And so there are other audits that are still work, or not audits.
FOIA's.
FOIA's, I'm sorry. Those are all the FOIA's that have been completed and closed, and there are other FOIA's that are still outstanding, they will appear on the next business meeting. Thank you for the reminder.
So now, ready for board reports? Conference report? Ann, did you wanna talk about the delegates?
This year, I was, because our regular delegate, Brenda Carter, was unable to make the conference in Chicago, the, for the Triple Alliance, Illinois Association of School Boards Conference. I was the stand-in delegate to vote for our, on behalf of our district, for new resolutions. There were some kind of just regular ones we can, you can look up that were not really controversial, but the one I think most people are interested in is Resolution Number Two regarding student safety and protection. This was a resolution brought to the, the State School Board Association about individual school districts having the right to, the opportunity to approve allowing their faculty and staff to carry firearms licensed, obviously with license sure. It was a very hot-button contested decision, there were a lot of passionate arguments for and against. But in the end, I, as part of our delegate, I voted no. I, I, I think that we kind of are all in agreement that we don't want more violence in our schools in any form, and so we would rely on our own trained officers in the field of policing and everything to handle that for us. We didn't wanna, anyway. The vote was very close, it was one-seventy-nine against, or one-seventy-nine-four and two-zero-three against. So if anybody is interested in keeping tabs on that, please pay attention, you know, with your legislators, with the Illinois School Board Association, to talk about it further, because I wouldn't be surprised if it comes back in next year or so for another vote. So, thank you for letting me go, Brenda, and I hope I represented the, the district well. Thank you.
Okay.
Ruth Ann, you wanna say something?
I was just gonna say, a shout-out to CU School Foundation. They have been supporting our teachers for a very long time, and I don't know individually the teachers who did write grants and receive their awards. Maybe Dawn has information, but I know that it's open to all Urbana teachers to be able to apply for these grants. And I was very excited to see that, the collaboration between CU School Foundation and the Idea Store, how the Idea Store had came out and gave teachers gift certificates. And I'm very happy to say the Idea Store is now over here in Urbana at Lincoln Square Mall. It is a great place for teachers, community members, anybody to go to. Reduce, reuse, and recycle. It is a fabulous place, and thank you very much, CU School Foundation, for supporting our teachers continually.
And I'm just gonna add one little caveat to that, and that is, the gift certificates were actually funded by the Urbana Alumni Association. And so the Alumni Association, in part because there are many overlaps between the different boards, but the Urbana Alumni Association was the one that funded the gift certificates for the teachers for the Idea Store. And, yes, I will have a complete list of the teachers from Urbana that won the grants at our next board meeting.
Great, thank you, I know they had just came out with that, yes. Thank you.
I do, I do, but I'll let anybody else go first. Okay. Just a reminder that there are four board, three, excuse me, three board seats open this coming spring and April. Subdistress two, four, and six are four-year terms. You can still do your petitioning and, and circulating those. They cannot be turned in at the county clerk's office until Monday, December tenth, through Monday, the seventeenth. And I was missing one little key factor on what it takes to qualify to run and be a school board member. Qualified elector or registered voter, and shall not be a child sex offender. Resident requirements are any person who, on the date of the election, is a United States citizen and of age of eighteen or old, over, and a resident of the state and the territory encompassing the district for one year preceding the election is eligible. Thank you.
Ann, I just wanted to add on that, we do have eighteen and nineteen-year-old college students that go to U of IBA, but board members in Chicago area. So I advise, you know, it's time for the young people to come out and get on the board and see how it is. So in all the elections, you all come out and run and have the opportunity to be a board member. Some of us have been here too long, and it's time for... So I'm just saying, you all come out, and, and because you're the ones that elect the board members, so you know what you want. Secondly, I just wanna add, the convention that we went to in Chicago touched my heart because I didn't know, I'm in the field of mental health, but the suicide rate of young people, we need to be aware and continue to take more training. It was tremendous, tremendous, and I think the most heartening General Assembly that I went to was for the young lady, Ms. Scott, who died at Calabine. Her dad goes out and talks all, and that's someone we need here, because he saved a lot of lives. And the child kept a journal. So she told how we, as even educators and board members, you see a child sitting by theirselves, no one eating lunch because they're new. This child went over to him, the one that died. The third, the second thing she did, somebody in special education, let them be your friend, go there and sit, she did this. Those are the people that spoke at her funeral. And the last thing she was saying was, just be kind, he wanted us to know, be kind to others. We have no color. He talked about the African-American boy, it was one African-American young man sitting at the table with his son, and the shooters came in the library. And it was two kids, and his son was in the middle. The man, the shooter shot both of them, and the son, a siren went off, it distracted, he told us he would have lost two kids. So that was very, the whole audience was just stand still. Yeah, it brought tears to our eyes, because they're on suicide and they're on the gun safety. So I learned a lot, and they're also on psycho, social, emotional. The presentation that Dr. Williams, that's very important, and this is statewide, so I thought I would just add that. I appreciate going, so I enjoyed it.
Yes, thank you.
Very educational, so thank you for allowing us to go. So, now, is there any more board information that needs to come out? Okay, for the adjournment, do we still stay in, are we going to closed session? Because we have a special meeting after this.
But there will be no public action?
There will be no public action on it. So we'll just vote to go.
For the purpose of...
Okay, I read that at the beginning, you want me to say it again?
Sure.
Okay, just to mind you, there will be an executive session after this meeting for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do we need to go around, or do we just, do I say, is everybody in favor?
It's a roll call, isn't it?
I thought it was a roll call.
Not on this one.
Okay.
No, okay.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Let's go in session.
A motion, a motion to go into closed session requires a roll call.
Okay, Ruth Ann? Roll call.
Member Carter?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Patton?
Yes.
Member Pulaski?
Yes.
Member Fisher votes yes, Vice President Rollins Gay?
Yes.
And President Demmett?
Demmett?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Everybody have a great Thanksgiving.